It's good to see you everyone this morning. We are November 8, 2020, 22. We're not in capable hands of our capable city clerks. Ms. Lisa Lambert.
This is the pre meeting of the Mobile City Council. Tuesday, November the 8th, Election Day. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on November the 9th, November the 12th, both in Mardi Gras Park from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM. November 12th in Benaville Square from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM. November 19th on El Myers Street, 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM. And September 2nd, 2023, 6:30 to 12:00 PM on Garrett Street.
Let's change that from 12, from 12:00, I guess it's still be AM.
12:00 AM.
Yeah, let's change that to 10:00. I think, Lisa, they said they can't hear you on the mic. I'm not too sure.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to rezone property located at 5015, 5017, 5019, 5021, 5029, 5033, 5039, 5049, 5051, 5055, 5121, and 5133 Cottage Hill Road, 2113 Demetropolis Road, and 2104 Garment's Lane from R2 and B2 to B2.
Good, Mr. Reynolds.
Today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1853 Tolman Avenue, 1302 Virginia Street, 850 Victory Drive West, 2721 Ralston Road. Public nuisances and are ordering them demolished.
And a question, question counsel Carol Penn or Dave? Okay.
Good morning. I do have an update for two of the locations. The first one being 850 Victory Drive West. This particular location now has an active permit and they're actively working. So I do request that we table this at this time. However, for the next update, the 2721 Ralston Road. And Mr. Davis, you'll probably remember that this has been a vacant property that's been gutted to the framing stage for about two years. They had a permit at one time, but it did expire. So municipal enforcement started this nuisance abatement action based on it being an abandoned construction site. However, he does have his permit with a permanent extension, but he is not working actively on site. So we still have the building in the same condition that it's been in the last two years. Without the active work on site, even though he has an active permit, I do request that we still declare this a public nuisance. Municipal enforcement will not move forward until his permit expires. But this will give him time to decide, is he going to repair this site? Since he's halfway, he gutted it, but he has not done the sufficient repairs to complete the project.
Thank you.
You have a question?
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Jacob Blasius. And this is, he has a request to the city to trap and exterminate coyotes. Rev. L. Secret Green Transparency and Anixation Process.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, if we can go back to that coyote issue. Are y'all prepared to, to address that this morning? Okay. Thank you.
Reggie Hill presented a budget amendment to improve public safety and remarks about the civic center.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Have, have we seen any amendment in writing to this point? It's been presented?
No.
I'm guessing not.
No.
No.
So what's, what's the process for a citizen to put forward an amendment to the budget legally? Okay. Is this? I don't even know what we're looking at, so. I mean, again, if, if folks are going to come down and, and put an amendment forward, Madam Clerk, if, if they would present that before they speak, so we have an opportunity to even review it while they're there and ask questions, it would help us out tremendously. As we, I mean, by the time he presents this, we're going to be trying to understand what this is and not even able to ask questions when they come down and present it. So the feasibility of something like this going through, from my perspective, is slim to none if you don't want to put it on the table before you come down and present it.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to follow up with that. Generally amendments to the budget come from the mayor. Now, if we've got any suggestions or if anybody in the public has a suggestion, we can certainly give them to the mayor and ask them to consider it. But the budget amendments start with the mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over. 11:047, 19:048, 22:049, 28:050, 28:051, 28:052, 65:053, 65:054, 45:055, 65:056, 65:057, or ordinances to adopt a building code, electrical code, fire code, housing code, an existing building code. Establish a schedule for, of permit fees. Adopt a fuel, gas code. Adopt a mechanical code. Adopt a plumbing code. Amend Chapter 52, Article 1 of Mobile City Code. Adopt a residential code.
Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just, I want to reiterate for everyone's understanding that, you know, this is not an action that's been put before us that hasn't had a lot of consideration in, in meetings and discussions before it even got to us. And the city met with multiple stakeholders with this months out, and they've reviewed this. Many are already practicing the things that are inside this document, these documents, plural. So I have no issues with putting this forward with 100% vote of confidence that, that the due diligence has been done for all the stakeholders that have to abide by these codes before it got to us. Thank you.
Anything else from any other council member? Madam Clerk.
Resolutions held over. 08970, approved purchase order to Target Solutions Learning, Inc. for annual renewal of Vector Solutions online learning management system training software. 08971, approved purchase order to Precision Delta Corp. for 375 cases of Winchester 9mm ammunition for MPD. 08972, approved purchase order to Arcadis for vehicle detection equipment and installation at eight intersections. 21973, authorized contract with Micor. Doing business as MDS Construction for Phase 4 improvements at Spanish Plaza. 21974, authorized contract with BFI Waste Services. Doing business as Republic Services for, of Mobile for garbage compacted rental and service for three years. 21975, authorized contract with Osprey Initiative for citywide stormwater litter collection and analysis services. 21976, authorized contract with Protech Video for professional services in the deployment and management of technical technology and consulting services, three-year contract. 21977, authorized contract of UAV survey for professional services in the deployment and management of technical, technology consulting services. This is a three-year contract also. 37978, approved certificate of public convenience and necessity to tram the town to operate a tram service. 6979, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims. Ordinance is being introduced. 07058, amend Chapter 7 of the Mobile City Code, animals and fowls.
Any questions from the council?
Good morning. Basically, what this is, is updating Chapter 7, dealing with, dealing with animals. There's six different areas that we're, we focused on during this update. It's number one, dealing with the change to animal services, the name, allowing the director to create programs to directly address and reduce shelter intake and reduce the cost for the city. Three, prohibiting animals from being locked in hot, hot environments for vehicles. Four, allocation to reduce hold times for the owners who are incarcerated or incapacitated and cannot care for their animals. Improving response to animal cruelty and welfare complaints. And then lastly, increasing fines for all violations. So I do have a packet that has the, the red line, red letter corrections. So if I can supply that to the council, they'll make it easier to, to see all the changes and a summary of all the changes.
Hold on, Mr. Karen. You finished, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Karen.
Third statement from the bottom.
Yes. To reduce hold times?
Incarceration.
Okay.
Starts from the bottom. Does that name that in particular person?
No, it's just basically when we receive animals, when folks have been arrested, maybe on the, dealing with any issues, they have animals. We know that they're in the, the house or in the vehicle. We, we were addressing those situations.
There was just a repetitive request that circulates around this type of incident at a particular address that I think I've visited five or six times now with owner being maybe on a, on some type of vacation where the pet is trying to be taken care of by someone else with a tether and a fence.
Right.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, we, we've had other cases similar to that but involving folks that have been incarcerated or in the hospital for extended periods of time. So I'll supply this packet for you.
Mr. President. Mr. Reynolds.
Does this ordinance replace all the codes dealing with animals and fowl? So are we, are we taking out everything and putting in this?
These are just, these are changes to Chapter 7.
Okay, but it doesn't throw out Chapter 7 and replace it with this?
No. No.
Okay, just amendments. So I've read just, I guess, nine pages of this. There, there is some ambiguous language that I think probably should consider. Things like in the section abuse or neglect, every act or omission where unnecessary or unjustifiable. That unjustifiable, if there's a way that we can narrow that a little bit. A few other ones like keeping a higher than usual number of animals as pets. You know, what is usual, I guess, probably could narrow that a touch. This one was interesting. Any domestic, this is the definition of a pet. Any domesticated animal kept by a person as a companion and friend. So if they're just a companion and not a friend, are they not a pet? So there, there are a couple of little cleanup things to do. But one of them that I thought was interesting, and, and I've been told that this is part of our law now, I wasn't aware of it, but all dogs, city license required for all dogs. So the owner of a dog over three months old must buy a city license.
That's correct.
And so I, I guess I'm curious, what is the purpose of requiring free, warm-blooded Americans to register their dogs?
It's just one way of keeping track of, you know, legally, of, you know, just like when you register anything, it's a way of tracking how many of that dog or whatever you're trying to track.
But we don't have to register our cats or our birds or, or lizards or whatever else it is. We have to register our dogs.
I understand that, but most of our, I think, I was not there when that was written, but I think the reason why is because most of our calls deal with vicious dogs or abundant dogs in certain areas. So that's one way of trying to track that quantity.
But then, but then there's also a section here about vicious, venomous reptiles. But we don't have to track venomous reptiles? We want to track our dogs?
The dog issue came up specifically, it's one of us, it's seven years ago. And Gina and Joe might remember this. There was an issue with dog sales out at the flea market. And so people who really love dogs came down and were part of the council with a, a way to help control this issue. And so that was the, that was the solution that we also came up with is you have to, you have to up to these groups to make sure that dogs are licensed and people aren't just selling dogs at the flea market and out of their houses.
Like puppy mills, things like that?
That's, that's where it's.
I'm interested in finding a, a better way. I don't know what it is. I just, you know, started getting into it, but I'd like, I'm interested in finding a better way. I mean, I, I don't necessarily want to register my dog. I didn't realize that that was a, a law that you had to register your dog. And, you know, I, I just wasn't aware of that. So I, I look forward to having this discussion. Animal discussions are always interesting and fun, I guess. So I, I guess I'll put forward some amendments next week. Thank y'all.
Mr. Gregory, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Jones.
Thanks. Joe, I can't remember, but do some of the proceeds from the licensing of dogs go back to animal control to help offset costs? Is that part of it? I can't remember. It does go back to the department, right?
For, for Spain neuter, it goes back to that.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so I think that's, that's.
It, it's a very nominal fee for the, for that.
Yeah. And, and I think also when this discussion came up so many years ago, it was very lively, of course, as most of these are, and they get very emotional. But one of the things that we were looking at doing was trying to encourage veterinarians throughout the city to make sure that their patients get licensed. Because if you care about your animal, you're taking it to the veterinarian. And so that would be one place where the information about the ordinance to get your dog's license could be taken care of all at the same time even. And even going so far as to try to issue the licenses. There's some way to make it easier. I know there was a discussion, I don't think it ever went any further than that, but, you know, that would certainly make it easier, kind of a one-step process.
Captain. I don't believe that the city of Mobile is an outlier in its requirement that residents license their dogs. I believe that most municipalities require that residents license their dogs. At least every municipality I've ever lived in, and I've lived in a lot of different municipalities, required that dogs be licensed.
Correct. That, that's, I've been a lot of different places too, and I've registered my dog license and rabies tag.
Rabies tags and the license generally go together.
Mr. Jones.
Is this license requirement something that we have the ability to enforce? And are, are we, better question, are we going to enforce it?
It's on the books now. It is not heavily enforced. So it's not like we're actively looking for dogs and people that have not licensed them.
I mean, I've got dogs. I mean, right now you could put me in jail because I, I haven't paid a fine. I got 10 bucks. I could, I'll pay it if it's a buck fifty, I'll, I'll get even. But I, you know, the point is, I'm sitting on the city council. It had been for 11 months, and I didn't even know this existed. And I, I've got a pretty high confidence that there's a lot of folks in this city that don't even know that this requirement exists. But if it's a requirement and we're not going to enforce it, and we don't have the capability to enforce it, then we don't need to make it a requirement. Now, I get the, the rabies, that's a liability to a homeowner. I mean, if somebody comes in your yard and your dog bites somebody and they have rabies, that homeowner can be sued for having a rabid dog, and I, I get that. I always make sure that my dogs have rabies shots. And so I, I think Gina makes a good point that if we're going to do this, let's make it easier for our constituents to be able, number one, to understand what the regulation is and what the ordinance is, and then find a way, you know, if, if it's a small fee, if it's a buck fifty, they shouldn't have to spend $5 in gas to drive down to Government Plaza and spend their time to get a permit. We should make it very easy for them, like Gina's great idea. You know, when you get your rabies tag, you know, there's a license associated with that or something to that impact or to that effect. So something I think we need to look at, I, I'm not against it, but I think if, we've got to enforce it if it's there, and we have to make it accessible, and, and we need to market this so folks understand what, what the requirement is. Thank you.
Mr. Karen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Reynolds.
I think, I think people don't, I, I don't know what the purpose is. I, I don't, I mean, what was described, there certainly is probably a better way or another way that we could enforce puppy mills besides requiring all dog owners. Although, you know, in the boxes of people around the city that, you know, they may have it in other cities, doesn't mean it's the right way or the only way or the best way. I think it's, it's a burden, right? This says, "The owner of a dog more than three months old shall purchase from animal services either a one-year," so every year you got to do it, "city license if a dog is vaccinated for rabies annually, or a three-year city license." I mean, I, I don't know what you do for pistol permits. You usually buy those at, around similar increments, you know, and it's not, not exactly the, the same sort of risk we're running here. So I, I just think that maybe we can exclude some of this and still meet the goals of protecting the city from puppy mills and all that sort of stuff. And I'm going to think heavily on this over the next week to try to come up with a better way.
If I might, some of the reasons for, for licensing dogs, making sure they have licenses, a way for us to identify a pet if it has kind of escaped the backyard of someone's home. Oftentimes, when a dog may have maybe escaped the, the residence or something like that, the dog may be accused of attacking a child walking home from school. So the license helps us identify the, the owner of the pet. There are not, there are frequently, there are not very many cases where the owner of a pet will, if it's not licensed, will say, "It's my dog that bit the kid down the street." So it gives us the ability to kind of maybe track who the, who the owner of the pet is. It's that, that was one of the reasons, again, that, that we looked at making sure that we had the ability to do that. My daughter has always had, you know, had to register her dog. A lot of dogs are being chipped today, but, but the license gives us the ability to identify the pet owner without us having to go door-to-door and knocking on people's houses because there's a registration associated with the license.
Now, all the animals that, the dogs that animal services are microchipped. Now, that may be an alternative to a license itself is requiring microchips of your, of your animals. So that way, they're trackable. And when we do find them, we can relate it to an owner.
I got one more, Miss, in response. Getting that in the same line of, we're not going to resolve this issue today, so I'm not going to belabor it, but Director Batiste, on, in Section 76, it says, "A rabies tag is supposed to be clipped to them." We could certainly be able to identify its owner through those means as well. So we're saying, not only you have to do the rabies thing and keep it clipped or under your control if they're not clipped with the tag, but we also want you to come down and buy a license from us every year or every three years. Just, I don't know that it's fully necessary to do it. And I'm, I'm curious, how many, how many dog bites do we have? Vicious dog bites do we have in a year? You know, is it, does it rise to the level? So we should subject the entire population of our city to this, this fine or fee?
Yes, sir. Right now, we're, we're averaging between five and seven bites a week.
And you can't find the owners?
A lot of times, we can find the owners, but there's probably two or three of them where it's a stray dog running the street, and we don't know who the owners are.
You think people would buy a license for a stray dog?
But.
Well, you got to renew every three years, every year. So if you, if you got a stray dog, y'all can buy a license for a stray dog every year or every three years.
It could be someone, it could be your dog that's not licensed that's running around the street. It's a stray dog.
But if it was licensed and it was a stray, you'd have to belong to it and let it become a stray.
Exactly.
Well, we could. Or I can say, hey, Scott, you can have this dog. Scott fails to license that I licensed it originally, and now what? I'm not responsible for that dog biting somebody. So anyways, we're not going to resolve it here, but this is, this will be a fun, a, a fun discussion.
Mr. Karen, Mr. Penn.
No, it's not.
William, you, you've made most, you've made most of my points. My biggest concern was is that what happens with the owner that has a litter of six puppies, keeps them for about six to 10 weeks and takes them and dumps them down on Conception Street Road? What happens to the owner that has 20 dogs at his house and, and 10 of them get out of the yard unmarked? You know, what, what happens in these incidents where, I mean, and, and I can tell you in document right now, where I could take you to a pack of 20 dogs right now roaming Three Mile Creek. So, I mean, having a license for a dog is, is only going to help the, it's like, let me, let me equate it this way. Fences make good neighbors. It's just that simple. Locks are only good for the person that put them on there. Somebody is going to do what they want to do anyway. So in, in essence, only the people that want to get this license are going to do it. You know, so it's going to be impossible to make everybody in the city do it. The, the other thing is, is that what constitutes a normal amount of pets? District 2, I have five houses. I'm not going to call the people out where I know that there are either 30, 40, 50, in, in one case, maybe 100 cats at them. So what do you do about the feral cats? You know, then I've got another neighbor, and I'll, I'll give you the street, but I won't tell you the house, Dublin Street, who has a rooster in the backyard. Chicken's illegal, but roosters on. And, and, and another street with three roosters on it. I'll tell you the street, but I won't tell you the person, Charles Street. So what are we going to do about all of those little things? We're talking about man's best friend here, but we still have 100,000 things to do, you know, to handle. But the worst of them is not the dog. I mean, we have things that are bothering us more so than any dog will. And, and again, you know, these feral cats now, they're becoming a big problem. Dexter Street, Cedar Street, you know, Spruce and Lower MLK. I mean, we've got a big issue there. I mean, we, we have prides in the city of feral cats, you know? So we're talking, we're talking about dogs. But what are we doing about these other things? And not even talk about the coyotes and, and the people that are sending me notices about coyotes in Spring Hill, around the Spring Hill Golf Course. That's not even my district. You know what I mean? So the issue of a tag on a dog concerns me. And then everyone is supposed to have a tag anyway. You know what I mean? So what's the difference in your dog not being tagged and not having a license? Everyone that has a dog is supposed to have a name tag and address and everything with the dog's name on the collar. What's the difference?
Yes, sir. So a, a couple of things I want to talk about regarding your questions is, for one, well, roosters are not permitted inside the city. They're not supposed to have roosters, and we will.
People got them.
When they're brought to our attention, we will talk to them and have them remove them from the city.
They have been brought to your attention.
And with cats, we understand that cats are a huge problem, and we have TNR programs that are, that we're starting up to aim at reducing the cat population that we are going to get off the ground real soon. And with rabies tags, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying with rabies tags. The rabies, the problem with rabies tags is they're not managed by a central location. Those are under the purview of each individual veterinarian, and a lot of these veterinarians do not keep good records. So you can call them and say, who's this rabies tag belong to? And they could very well tell you, I don't know.
So one of the things that I think we, it's important to bring up is, I think these questions are good to be asked, especially in a public. good to be asked, especially in a public. Most of those questions are within the purview of you all as a legislative body. The previous council, or two councils ago, I guess, Mr. Gregory and Mr. Dave Wrong, saw fit to find a solution based on what was happening at the time. And then that was, that was a legislative solution in conjunction with the public. And it was, it was a human cry. And I think Mr. Gregory alluded to that. So the primary issue was not the issues you are talking about today, which are legitimate issues. It was to stop the puppy mills and to keep people from talking about all of the other issues was never the goal. These issues, I think some of them came up. It was to focus on the primary issue, the puppy mills and the dogs who were malnourished and suffering from rabies and being sold out of houses and people complaining. And that was it. And so there are not many modern ways to handle this, but I think, because Reynolds is right, we're not gonna solve it today. We're more than willing to give our input, but ultimately it is a legislative solution and you all craft the board this. How many is too many? And if there is a modern way to deal with feral cats, we're gonna have, I think, a spay and do the program.
Yeah, traps, yeah.
And this version. So we are addressing those issues, but to the extent we all need our input.
Finish, Mr. Carroll.
Yeah, I'm all right.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Joe, for working on this. I think it's something definitely needed, you know, in our city. Councilman Reynolds, have you received any issues regarding license of dogs? Have you, like, people complained about this?
No.
Okay. Joe, have you received any issues about license of dogs? People complaining?
No.
Okay, so we haven't received any issues about license of dogs. All right, we just, we just got, I wanted to make that clear. Second, and go back to attorney, Woods, we are the legislative branch. And so Ben, Councilman Reynolds, made some great points in the wording and reading. We have the right, he says he's gonna put some amendments on place. Let's work on some ordinance. That's what we need to do. And that's how we move it forward. Thank you, Ms. President.
Ms. Gregory.
No, I don't mean to belabor the point, but one thing that does happen is when dogs are picked up running loose in the city, that's when you can check to find out if they are licensed, because a lot of times the owners will come down and pick them up at Animal Control. And at that point, you can say, oh, by the way, you were supposed to buy a license for your dog. So one, you get a fine for the dog running loose. Two, you get a fine for being overdue on your license. And three, you gotta buy a license. So therefore, they catch you that way. I think using the funds from any of the licensing or anything else that we do should go back to Animal Control to help them take care of all of these issues that we keep hearing about. Manpower, you name it. So if we keep the licenses in place, maybe we even increase the amount and make sure that those funds go back because we hear about the feral cats. I have dogs running loose in my neighborhoods too. I was on the phone and emailing with them yesterday because of a pack of dogs that keep running loose. They know all about them. They've been out there. They can't seem to control them because the people who own the dogs think it's perfectly fine to open the door and let them run, you know? We have this all over town, but if we keep these in place, use the funds for what they are supposed to be, you know, taken care of, and I think it's fine to keep those licenses. And like Cory, I don't hear people complaining about having to license their dogs. The problem is, they don't know that they're supposed to. So a better public relations program, working with the veterinary offices, I think is something that we definitely need to work on if we're going to make it, you know, successful.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Ms. President.
Order 64059, Zuri zoning property on Cottage Hill Road, Demetropolis Road and Gammons Lane. Consent resolutions being introduced. 03980, reappoint Diane Jones to the History Museum of Mobile Board. 37981, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for postcrafted cocktails and wine bar on O'Shea Road. And 37982, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Chevy Store on 65 North Cody Road. 58983 and 984 are authorizing removal of weeds and assessing costs for removal of weeds. 40985, 986, 987, 988 are declaring the structures, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 60989, 990, 991 are approving award of special bonus to the Parks and Recreation employee, to Public Services employee, and also to the Public Works at Large Employee of the Month. 60992, 993, 94, 95, 96 are determining appropriation to National Association of Women Business Owners, Right Way Christian Center Church, Winfield Homeowners Association, Inc., CC's Classic Catering, United Methodist Inner City Mission, Serve a Public Purpose and Approve Payment. 031005, reappoint Harris Oswalt to the Mobile Library Board. Resolutions being introduced. 08997, approve purchase order to Schaefer Plastics North America for 793 residential trash containers, $47,287.69. 08998, approve purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for 50 sets of turnout bunker gear for Mobile Fire Rescue Department, $147,400. 08999, approve purchase order to IT vendor for managed network threat protection equipment and one-year support subscription, $19,593.90. 091000, transfer funds from the General Fund to Capital Improvement Fund, Capital Project, Cruise Terminal, new gangway, $4,900,000.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, could they sort of explain what this is and what this covers?
Currently, that's to replace our original gangway at the cruise ship terminal, which is 13 years old. And within this new gangway, which we have looked at, the plans will include some innovations, upgrades that this current gangway doesn't have. And like I said, this is the vital link in order, it's an investment in the cruise industry here. That gangway serves as a vital point in how we get our passengers from the terminal to the cruise ship in a climate-controlled, easy way, especially those with handicaps. So the more, the older this thing gets, the more the gangway costs to maintain. We've spent several hundred thousand dollars a year on repairs for parts that have to be manufactured now. They can't just be bought off the shelf. Just to paint what needs to be painted and cleaned, that's gonna be 1.7 million. So when you add all that up, we thought it'd be most cost-effective, especially when the ship is out, to replace the gangway now.
What's the lifespan on these things that we're doing that have this, these large dollar costs associated with them?
Right now, the gangway is, it can be safely operated, but like I said, the longer we, the lifespan, we've reached the end of the lifespan now. We're able to maintain it and keep it running, but at a certain point, it does cost more to maintain than to just get a new gangway.
So it's about 15 years or so?
Yes. But I mean, I think we're at the point now, whether our gangway, we've reached the lifespan of it.
That gangway was a one-off.
Correct.
In fact, specifically for this location, that was a pad hoc. It wasn't, it wasn't a traditional standard gangway. It was an expedition one we had because we're a new park.
It's a prototype.
And so we'll be getting one of the standardized gangway system that will probably easier to maintain longer life.
Which is why I was asking the question, what's the lifespan of this thing?
It would probably be longer than what we have. This was a one-off.
Yeah, it was a prototype. So like I said, some of the parts became fine now. In the software that used to run it's outdated. So this, we thought this would be a great opportunity to make that investment.
And you know, the point here, I don't have a problem doing this. I mean, it takes money to run an investment into this, and I think we all know the value that this brings. But this also gives you and David the ability to go back to these cruise ship companies and let them know the investments that we're putting in that we're paying for.
Correct.
That they're not paying for. And, you know, I think Mobile does a lot to try and go above and beyond what other cities may do to make it invitable for them to come and do business here. And hopefully, they realize that as well.
Yeah, we're looking at this gangway, not just for Carnival ships, but for other potential future ships that may wanna come to Mobile.
Thanks. Mr. David. Mr. Penn, did you have something?
Yeah. Gangway, so our current gangway is, I mean, what's the condition? Like?
It's, like I said, it's safe and it works. But thing, every day, every time we have a cruise ship in, it's, we don't know if it's gonna work or it's gonna be functional. Because like I said, it's getting, it's old. It's reached towards the end of its service life. So every time we use it, it's a hitter. We cannot have that type of, we hope it works today because when we track these other cruise lines, they wanna have a new reliable gangway. Like I said, that's how you connect the terminal to the ship, and that's how passengers will board.
And so you say that the maintenance to fix whatever you say, the reason why it's causing, you don't know if it's gonna work and that, what is the cost? Have we looked at seeing?
Like I said, depending on the part, we've spent several hundred thousand dollars on maintenance, just repairing. But we have to go get parts manufactured, fabricated, because they no longer exist.
Okay.
That's where we're starting to see the cost build up.
So we don't, do we know if we say, okay, if we wanted to get whatever this problem, we don't know if it's gonna work certain days. How much would it cost to fix it? Do we have that assessment?
Well, it depends on what was broken. If it's a piston or a driver, depending, it's certain, we have certain parts that we stop because of the right sound.
I guess my, what I'm asking, to make sure I'm clarifying, if you, if I pull up and I wanna get on this gangway and you say, I don't know if it's gonna work today, is it a certain part that's causing that? Or you're saying that it's multiple parts? It could be?
It's multiple parts.
Parts, okay.
And like I said, that's why we test it before the ship comes in, because we don't know when the next part, next piece may break. It's different parts of the gangway.
Okay. I, just for me, I just would love to, you know, to have that number of, like, how much it costs. Of course, I'm a, I support growing the city. I think we have to invest in things to help grow our city, especially, you know, with this cruise terminal. But this is, this is a lot of money. And, you know, for me, and I'm sure y'all probably, the administration is working on a plan, but I think a lot of times, investing in the people that live here is very vital. And I think that that also will help grow the city.
Right.
And so I guess anytime for me, when I see this large amount of money, this is, my next concern is, is there anything that we can do to still accomplish the task, because we know this is needed, and still able to do some other things as well? You know, and so that's the reason why I'm asking, is it an assessment of something that we could say, I'm just using example, I don't know, we just throwing a number, you said a couple hundred thousand. Well, just say to fix whatever our current is a million dollars, I'm just throwing a number out. Well, now my mind said, okay, well, got 3.900 million that we about to invest in this? Maybe we can move this somewhere and better, the city, the community, investing in the people. That's the reason why I'm kinda like asking for that assessment. So that just kinda give me knowledge of understanding the need. But if you, if you come back and say, well, if we do this, it's gonna cost $4,800,000, close to what this is, then it makes sense to go and invest in it. So.
Yeah, I understand, but I think it's kinda like a car, you know, at some point where you don't know if it's gonna start every day, or, you know, it breaks down when you're going to work. Eventually, that reliability and that depend, you gotta have that reliability of having it work consistently with very little maintenance, because that maintenance and having it, making sure it can work with these cruise ships coming in is important.
Yeah, you make a great point, you know, and I definitely understand. I understand that with a vehicle, and I also understand that if I go purchase a car that I can't really afford, it could damage some other areas in my household that I have allocated. And so when I look at it as a vehicle, then make a decision, I'm gonna go buy a new vehicle, I'mma just get this part done, fixed in a car that's already paid off. It's a, you see what I'm saying? I make a decision based on what I'm seeing, what I'm able to do for that budget. So that's the reason why I was just asking, is it an assessment that we know that would cost if we had to utilize what we have right now? So, thank you, Ms.
I see that as an investment, because like I said, within cruise ships, then we draw in close to 2,000 people into the city every four to five days. So that's, that's a cost. I mean, that's a benefit for the city. So I'm gonna maintain that.
Yeah, I no doubt believe that there's definitely investment, and we, of course, again, just when you make a decision for the city and investing in the city, you wanna make the best investments.
I understand.
Yeah. And so, you know, when, especially when you see this size, amount of money, you wanna make sure we're making the best decision for our city. Thank you, Ms. President.
Mr. Carroll, and the mayor.
Question, where in the general fund is this $4.9 million coming from?
Surplus.
So it's coming from the surplus. What budget year is it coming from the surplus? Or is it just coming from the total amount of surplus that we put back over the years? It's accumulated surplus, okay. Last week, I heard the statement that before the end of the third quarter, we had a $109 million split in District 2. But, you know, capital projects and other projects, well, second quarter, whatever it is, but, you know, the true basis of the thought is, is that the city's budget runs, what, 294 million to $304 million a year? And if we were spending every year before the end of the second or third quarter, $100 million, $100 million in District 2, that would extremely complicate the budget, would actually put that, that terms budget somewhere in a negative, I think, if, you know, based on public safety and all the other things that we have to spend in the course of a year. So it's kinda, it's kind of misleading when you think about statements like that and the amount of money that's being spent in the course of one year in any particular district when we're talking about growth. The other thing is, is that $4.9 million coming from the surplus. You know, you've heard me say from day one that District 2 needs positive growth. But if we're gonna spend $4 million on a gangway for the cruise terminal, then why aren't we spending $4 million in neighborhood revitalizations with a strong program where we're actually doing a wealth of extremely intense things, where the city itself is investing as opposed to reaching out to someone else to have us partner with it? Meaning, half the time, we're looking for investors or developers to do the things that we can actually reach out and do some of, in our own way, with a program that we all agreed to move forward. The other thing is, is that week after week, we see these types of expenditures that are coming from the surplus, where, you know, the surplus could also make it so the people that actually live in the city, no matter what district they in, feel the power of the city. It's okay to do these infrastructure and capital things, that's great. And, you know, I love the cruise terminal. I remember when it first came, and I know all the things that it takes to get here, but I also think that we need to be spending those types of funds, you know, in places where people actually feel what the government or what municipal government is doing for the city and in the city. I mean, everybody in District 2 and around the city ain't gonna feel the cruise terminal. Most of the people that feel that benefit are people that come into town for a, for a recreational need, even though it provides some economic value for us for economic impact, but the people really don't overall feel that, especially people that have low to moderate incomes. They just don't see that impact. So if we're gonna spend that kinda money, I like to see it spent other way. You know, spend additional funds in other places the same way. Lastly, the new cruise ship that we intend to get, it's larger than the one we previously had?
Yes, it is.
Does that make the previous gangway dysfunctional?
No, we can still use that.
We can still use it.
But this, the newer gangway will, like I said, we're looking towards, as the ships get larger, this new gangway.
So this is to accommodate new and larger ships?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
The gangway, sales and all the alternative, real large, remember this, we had fly, man Scott, Spain twice, coming in and getting the gangway. So yes, we can put some parts on it, but how long's it take if the man Scott flying from Spain can help to fix it? You heard it said that we bought a prototype, Bill Seal number one. Whenever you buy Seal number one, you don't know what longevity is going to be. So there is now a, an alternative from the gangway standpoint. Either we're going to be in the business or we're not going to be in the business. We'll be glad to answer any questions offline, but that's really the We'll be glad to answer any questions offline, but that's really the bottom line. And as far as spending money in other areas of the city, I would like to thank the entire city budget. Everything that we're spending, three hundred million dollars, is going out to all the citizens of City Mobile. You're spending more money on capital than every city council district you've ever spent. And so to say that we're taking one four hundred, four million dollar project and actually be spent elsewhere, maybe the three hundred million that we spend every single year, this is an expenditure that hadn't happened, you know, in thirteen years. So, you know, to me, so I appreciate your questions. I hope you have a better understanding of it, but we don't know another alternative than to do what we're doing at this point now.
See, that's current.
I don't think that I said spent elsewhere. I said that if we're going to spend that amount of money on the gangway to improve the infrastructure to accommodate the larger ships, then I would like to see us spend just as intensely and aggressively funds of the same nature with impact in underserved neighborhoods that deserve a shot at being revitalized. I never said that. What I said was, is I'd like to see an equal amount spent in those places that haven't seen that over time and start seeing some impact on those neighborhoods.
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
Look, we're missing a huge point here. And I heard this last week. When you look at things like the terminal, when you look at things like the thirty million dollar investment in the airport, when you look at the investment in Topgolf, these things provide returning revenue to this city year over year over year. Look at the airport this week and the announcement that hit. We're one of fifty places in the U.S. where Amazon is now flying deliveries into. Every one of those planes that lands brings revenue and jobs into Mobile, Alabama, into the general budget. And that general budget goes to six districts, seven districts. Every time a plane lands, that's return on investment. We, according to your point of what's it going to cost, I think the point they're trying to make is, do you want to put a thousand dollar set of tires on a rust bucket? I mean, it'll fix the problem, but before those tires wear out, you're going to have an engine fail or a transmission fail, or you're going to have a massive failure somewhere else. So why put a Band-Aid on a second chest wound when you, you need to replace the whole body? And I think that's the point here. But when you look, David, how much revenue is generated from the cruise ship for this city year over year?
It's, you know, it's thirty-five thousand hotel rooms, it's six million in parking and passenger fees, it's retail and restaurants, gas stations.
Give me a dollar figure ballpark.
From a lodging standpoint alone, you know, it's average rate of one thirty times thirty-five thousand times sales tax collected, so on and so forth. So, you know, whatever that math is.
How long's the cruise terminal been operating in Mobile?
We've been cruising for fifteen years, seventeen years.
So is it safe to say that we've seen revenue input into this city probably three to four times the amount of this five million dollars?
Basically, you're amortizing, you know, five million, three hundred and fifty thousand a year for a gangway, right? And that's what we're paying in parts right now that you don't know you can get. It's going to start interfering with a possible cruise or two. The passengers won't be able to go on if we can't get the part or get the service. It goes to the mayor's point, do we want to cruise from Mobile or not? And this is, I think, the team has been fiduciary responsible from a service standpoint, from a customer service. It really comes down to whether we want to cruise from Mobile or not.
And, you know, look, every, every city that we've gone into in a leadership exchange, including Tampa that we just went to, has a cruise ship coming out of it. It puts us on the map. But, and to Corey's point and to William's point, Mr. Mayor, I think what they're saying too is, let's see an earmarked million dollars to go into a neighborhood. And I haven't seen that. I think that would alleviate some of the concerns there. Specifically for a project from the excess revenue. We have done it with things that give back, and we cannot discount what that means to the future of the revenue in the city. So, yeah, it's a big expenditure, but it's an expenditure that's going to give that money back. When we put a million dollars into a neighborhood, that million dollars is not coming back to us. It's not going to come back to us. There is no revenue generation from putting a roof on a house. There's not. It's that simple. When you put a gangway in front of a ship that we can bring cruise ships in and bring five million dollars a year in, it's going to pay for itself. And it's going to give us the excess revenue that we can put another million dollars into that neighborhood that you want to put a million dollars into. That's going to create the money to do those other things in the neighborhoods and districts that we need to put money into. And I don't think there's anybody at this table that disagrees that we need to put money into those neighborhoods. But if you don't have a revenue generation form to do that with, you're going to pull from nothing. And we've seen that play out in the city before. And that, you start driving debt. So these things drive revenue that gives us the ability to put money into neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Penn, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. But I'm a little confused. Is this the first time it's read on the agenda? This the first time it's read on the agenda? This is a, what is this? This is a pre-council meeting, right? This is a council meeting, right? I'm just, I'm confused. I never knew it was wrong to ask questions. I represent people who want to know. I'm confused also, because I never heard, said one time that I'm against it. I just asked how we're allocating the money. I want to be educated. So I'm confused when, if I ask questions, then we go against something? Because I want to be able to go tell the people in District One who don't have opportunity to be here and watch the pre-council meeting, who are at work doing the council meeting, that I can share the reason why we approved 4.9 million dollars? It's because they can't fix it? I've never received this information. Chief Barbara, you told me about this before? Have we had a meeting about this? Okay, so we haven't had a meeting. I don't know anything about it. And I ask simple questions, because I want to have an understanding. And that's what I believe the council is supposed to do. This is the first time I'm saying on the agenda. I didn't know it was an issue. I think we went farther than what we were supposed to go, because all I asked was, what is the, can we fix it? And if you're saying that we can't fix it, then we can't fix it. If it costing us money, then of course, and I just said that if it's going to cost us money, I think we went left. Way left. Then we got it to about neighborhoods and all this type of stuff, and it just, all I wanted to know is what's going on with 4.9 million dollars, guys? It's on the agenda. We, this is a pre-council meeting. We here to learn what's going on. That's all it is. And I wish we stayed to the topic of 091000. But since we moved to other issues that I didn't bring, I want to just acknowledge those things. Never I mentioned, let's put some money somewhere in the neighborhood, let's do roofs. I never said anything, but since we're talking about it, revitalization can change not just the community. I said investing people. I didn't say, let's put houses, let's do roofs. So let me give you an example. Highway forty-five. Where do we get majority of our money from? For the, where we make money from? Sales tax, right? Sale tax. If you don't fix drainage and roads, businesses are not going to be there on that area. But when you do provide those services, now you have companies coming back, revitalizing that community. Now we're getting what? Sale tax. I'm just using me as an example, and I'm sure other council members can do the same thing. Tomerville enters Mobile, Highway forty-five, what's next to that municipality? The city of Pritch. I, I suggest you go sit at the bus stop right there and talk to the people who come and shop, and this is what they say. I said, where you live? Oh, we live in Pritch. Oh, so y'all, y'all catch the bus to come in Mobile, and now we're getting sale tax from where now? Pritch. So if that area is growing, now we're getting multiple money that coming in. That's what I'm saying, Scott. It wasn't, I wasn't talking about roofs. And then honestly, I want to talk about nothing but 091000. And I would just want to know how I can go educate my community, or why if we vote on this, so we can have an understanding. So I would definitely just support, you know, going forward, sticking to what we're talking about. And that's what I was asking, so I could just have knowledge and understanding of what's going on on the agenda that when I vote for something, I know where I'm voting. So I don't know what, what happened to make us go left. But let's just stay balanced, and then we can get this, and we can move forward our pre-council meeting, because it's right now, it's ten oh five. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Penn, I think he was maybe referring to me when I mentioned neighborhood revitalization. And maybe the statement made that revitalization, we're not going to get a return on that, right? But in my mind, revitalization gives a huge return. Let's just think about one thing here. City wants to add thirteen to twenty-five thousand people to the city. And I think you're saying that the people are going to give you a return because they're going to buy different things in the city and spawn sales tax. But revitalization does a lot of things in return. One, you revitalize the neighborhood, you slow the crime rate down, you start to help the people, they get pride. Additional people move into the neighborhoods to the tune of we don't know how many. Those same amount of people that you're trying to annex grow organically within the city, and the city gets a huge return. So to say that the city does not get a return on revitalization and putting the money into a neighborhood that's underserved is a huge misconception, and it's a big misunderstanding on how we revitalize cities and gain from those revitalizations. It puts that little bit of avalorum tax back on the map that you said, that you're so proud of, talking about when we're doing annexation. To say that is, is just misleading, because revitalization helps the tax base. It brings new businesses to our area because of rooftop counts. It grows the city both economically, and it grows the city both in population.
Those people already live in those houses. Those taxes are supposed to already be, being paid. We're already investing in the streets, the sidewalks, the drainage. So that's nothing that exists. If those houses are deteriorating to that point, the City of Mobile's name is not on the deed to any one of those properties. The homeowner is. And sometimes we need to go in, but the city is not responsible to go in and build a neighborhood. The city is not responsible to go in and put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a home that the homeowner didn't go into, and that's a conversation for another day. I understand what you're saying, and yes.
Mr. President.
There is, there is room, I'm talking. There is going to be return on an investment if there is a new home that's built, or a home that's added to the city. But a home that currently exists that a homeowner is living in, those taxes are already supposed to be being paid. And we're already investing into that community, to the tune of about three hundred million dollars a year.
One last sentence, Mr. President.
After Mr. Carroll, we're going to be back in the hands of Madam Clerk.
Yeah. It's a shame when the only thing that you see in the community are the people that live in dilapidated homes, when you don't see the empty lots, when you don't see the acreage of underconstructed areas, when you don't see the possibilities. You know, you always use a statement, if you can't see the possibilities, then shame on you.
Twenty-one, one thousand one, one thousand two, authorizing change orders with John G. Walton Construction for Texas Street Rehabilitation Project, one hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And for Broad Street redevelopment project, two million eight, two million eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Mr. Ronald. I'm just curious on this. I looked at the change order items. I mean, there seems like there has been several change orders for this project. Am I correct? Okay. What's this one in particular? Why is it coming? Aren't we at the tail end of this project?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just help me a little bit? I mean?
Good morning, everyone. Great meeting so far. Last thing on the agenda. So this is a final change order. There may be one final closeout change order, but we're right at the end of the project. So this is doing some housekeeping and calculating the overruns, the underruns, the force account items, things that had to change on the project. You all know that this is probably the most complicated construction project that the city has ever undertaken. We've worked really hard to keep the project going and do the things we can in the height of COVID. And so those are calculating those things and getting that together.
All right, thank you. And I just want to raise just the public's attention to the nearly forty thousand dollars the city spent to try to save trees along this thoroughfare. I mean, of hydro excavating roots and, you know, it looks like the city's done all that they could do. That's it.
Call for public hearings, forty-one, one thousand four, call for public hearing to rezone property located at thirty-two hundred and thirty-two oh two O'Shea Road from R one and B three to B three, scheduled December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Announcement.
Anything from the council?
President.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, the Public Service Committee meeting that was on the fifteenth is going to be moved to the, what date is that? The twenty-ninth, due to some conflicts with state legislators and the mental health department.
Anything from the administration? All right, so you got it, ten thirty.